Apparently under Sudi, that is prison already there.
Okay, I will call this committee of the whole meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none. He accept the agenda. I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilor Massey, the committee members accepts the agenda of the committee of the whole on January 20th, 2021. Any discussion on the agenda? No? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Hey, we have no delegations. Moving on to staff reports, Community Services Department. Departmental work plan update, January 2021. I have a motion moved by Councilor Noble, seconded by Councilor Manley, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report CS 2021-02. Departmental work plan update, January 2021, from the Community Service Department. Welcome in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To start, this report will touch on COVID. As you know, Dr. Paul came to council and explained the different measures, the different lockdown measures, and of course, that affected recreation greatly. All of our facilities are presently closed, and we're hoping to hear back by February 11th on what the status of the lockdown is going to be and be able to adjust our plans accordingly. We are looking presently at modifying the contracts that were impacted, as well as once we get a defined date for starting backup, adjusting the different memberships at the Dome for our clients there. We have also been discussing COVID. It's been a hot subject with the Recreation Directors across SDG. And one of the things that was brought up at this week's meeting was keeping ice in, and the consensus has been so far that all of the townships are keeping their ice in until they hear back from Public Health or the Province on when we are going to be coming out of lockdown. We have been successful in obtaining our permit to remove aquatic vegetation. So as council will recall, we submitted our request in December, and we heard back just at the end of December that we will be able to remove aquatic vegetation in Mill Pond once again come summertime. We also have the RFP for the Engineering and Project Management Services for the Glengarry Sports Palace that's closing on Friday. We expect to bring a report back to council at the February 8th meeting. For COVID has again triggered a whole bunch of surveys coming from different government agencies, and one of the surveys that we completed this week, which was quite lengthy, was on energy use and occupancy for the Maxwell and District Sports Complex. So they're wanting to set, I guess, a baseline for our different complexes to see how they were impacted by the closures due to COVID. We have attended several trainings over December and January, and I was lucky enough to participate in a management training that was given by Alan White in December and greatly enjoyed that. As you know, we keep participating in our different committee meetings, the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee, as well as the Community Development Committee. We have been moving different projects forward with Arts, Culture and Heritage regarding the CIP, as well as the Blue Plax. We have two of those coming back to committee. The Community Development Committee, we're at the stage where we're proceeding with interviews to hire a development and marketing coordinator, and as a matter of fact, we're interviewing tomorrow, and we're hoping to bring back some good news on that front. All of our events, of course, have been impacted due to COVID, and several of the organizations that we partner with have moved to virtual platforms. That's the case actually for the Boys and Girls Club. They're offering different seminars to our community, and we encourage the youth in our community to register for those. It gives the youth a great opportunity to be able to discuss and to do things with other youth their age. The Great Canadian Kilt Skate was originally supposed to happen at the Maxwell and District Sports Complex, and that has been moved into a home addition. So we're encouraging everyone who has a kilt to get out there and to skate on any surface that they have and take a picture and post it to our Facebook page. Our yoga programming is continuing on in a Zoom format again for this session. Our community partners, our recreation associations are kept up to date regarding all of the activities or all of the impacts that COVID might have on their activities, as well as their facilities. We've been working with Todd McDonnell also to install all the Plexiglas in their different community halls. So he has taken the lead on that project, and we're very grateful for that. We keep performing different inspections and maintenances for our different facilities. We have the TSSA inspector that's due any month in at both the Maxwell, any date this month, I should say, at both the Maxwell and District Sports Complex, as well as the GSP, and that's for our boilers and vessels inspections. So we're continuing onwards with that. We also have fire inspections that are going to be done shortly through our Fire Department of Fire Services. For our other projects, we have been supporting different community endeavors. As you know, we had a very successful light-up North Glengarry activity that occurred in December, and that was in partnership with the Glengarry News, the different chambers of commerce, and of course, the community in great numbers participated in this. We supported some film activities by Fireside Pictures that occurred in Alexandria. We also have been working on the modified version of the Great Canadian Kilt Skate. We were fortunate also to be able to have the collaboration of different councillors to promote the different ongoings in the community. One of those is the Community Grants Program, which was launched and which will be closing in February. So any organization that is looking to apply, we encourage them to contact the Economic Development Department to get more information on that process. And as usual, we are posting information to our social media, our Facebook and website, regarding any matters of importance or of interest to our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the members of the committee? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just with regards to the the request for proposal for the Engineering and Project Management Services, is that the the second intake for that?
Yes, it is a second intake for that.
And I missed what you said there. Do you think it's this one's going to be successful?
So we answered quite a few clarification questions at the second during the second process. So I think there was a little bit of lack of clarity on what portion of the project could go forward if ever we were not successful in getting the ICIP funding. As you recall, we're still waiting for a response from the government on that grant application. So no matter what council had okay moving forward with the replacement of the arena slab, and the refurbishment of the other spaces would be dependent on obtaining that grant. So we clarified that. We made that very, very clear in the engineering request, the RFP, and we are hoping to get some responses back on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further comments or questions? Council Noble?
I just wanted to double check, Anne. The way I'm reading it, fiber, when you're talking about fiber in the park and the, or GSP rather, that you're talking about fiber internet, so like we finally have real internet?
Yes, exactly. So that project is very near completion.
Cool, excellent. Thank you.
That opposed to fake internet?
Yeah, the library hasn't had internet in 24 hours. So yeah, that's fake internet.
Thank you for that clarification. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you, Anne. Okay, next loan to the Alexandria Junior B Glenn's Hockey Club. I have a motion moved by Councilor Manley, seconded by Councilor Madden, that the Committee of the Whole receives the staff report number CS 2021-01, and that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council approves a loan to the Alexandria Junior B Glenn's Hockey Club in the amount of $12,000 reimbursable by December 31st, 2021. Anne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So council received a letter from Derek Vio, who is the president of the Alexandria Junior B Glenn's Hockey Club, requesting a bridge loan in effect for the club. As you know, all our activities have been impacted by COVID, and they had purchased some equipment, and they're asking us to give them a loan. This is, this has happened to us in the past. We've had different organizations approach us whenever they're holding either large community events or sports organizations that have come to us in the past when they face difficulties, and we have to to, you know, agree that COVID is very definitely a very unusual circumstance. So staff has worked on a proposal that they would bring to council, a bylaw that they would bring to council at the next council meeting if the Committee of the Whole recommends us to do so.
Okay, thank you for your report. Although, the questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we know if the organization has searched out other opportunities to to have have this item covered under COVID relief? I know that there are a lot of different funding programs out there that that you know, businesses and not-for-profits can apply for. I'm just asking that because that would be certainly a better option than asking the township. We are, we are after all, not a lending institution. I am in favor of helping them out, obviously, but I think it's important that they explore other options as well. Just wondering if that's happened.
Anne?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So all I can say is, I'm not sure how far they've been with the different programming, but the fact that there are sports organizations disqualifies them for a lot of the business loans. We are looking at different things that are coming down the pipeline, and we will work with them in order for them to secure other funding, if at all possible. And I know we had even thought of maybe putting a condition in the bylaws stating that if they receive grant money, that they would have to repay the loan. But unfortunately, grant money may be tied to other conditions, which would make that they can't hand the cash out. So we will, rest assured, we will continue working with them, and if they have an opportunity to have money with which they can reimburse early, I'm certain they will do so.
Thank you very much. That's helpful.
Thank you, Anne. I just, I think it's also important just to say that the the reason that for the loan is that they had to prepay for in in the league that they play in, they have to purchase brand-new equipment every year for each player, and the players pay for that through their registrations, but because there was no season, there are no registrations. So that equipment is pre-purchased for next season, so they will get their money back on it. Any other questions or comments from anybody? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to Treasury Department, Departmental Work Plan Update, January 2021. I have a motion moved by Councilor Madden, seconded by Councilor Wentzink, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report TR 2021-04. Departmental Work Plan Update, January 2021, from the Treasury Department. Welcome, Kim.
Good afternoon. Treasury Department is still working on policies. There's several in draft phase that aren't going to be presented to to council until the pandemic is over. Asset management, the asset management plan needs to be completed by Jan, sorry, July 1st, 2021, and it is posing quite a problem in trying to have the resources available to do it. We did council-supported resolution to lobby the governments for this, I believe at the last council meeting. Haven't heard back, so we're still trying to meet that deadline. We have three properties currently awaiting tax sale in either May or June of 2021. There's also 13 properties currently being registered. They'll probably be available for sale in probably October, November next year. We did have one successful tax sale in November, which was great. The second one, the the owner of the property came in at the 10th hour and paid his property taxes in full. So he didn't lose his property, but we got our taxes, which was great. Year-end processing is currently underway. The auditors, as of today, have set a date of February 22nd for them to start over a two-week period. The hopes are this year we have financial statements to council by, sorry, late spring, early spring. The last couple of years, it's been quite late. Last year especially with COVID, it was really late, which causes problems with the rollover of financial data. So hopefully, this will go well this year. Budget is being presented to council on January 28th via Zoom, with the hopes of it passing in early February. And then just right now, we're doing some year-end financial reporting for various grants. So that's what the Treasury Department is doing.
Thank you. And just a clarification, when you said the properties, you said next year, next, you said October, November of next year, that's this year?
Sorry, I meant this year. I'm sorry, 2021. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments for Kim? Getting off easy, Kim?
I did. Thank you.
I have a motion. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you for your report. Moving on to Building, Planning and Bylaw Department, Departmental Work Plan Update, January 2021. Welcome, Jacob. Sorry, I'll read the motion first. I have a motion moved by Councilor Wentzink, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report BP 2021-01. Departmental Work Plan Update, January 2021, from the Building, Planning and Bylaw Department. Now, welcome, Jacob.
Yes, we're clear now. Thank you for reading that. All right, so what I will do, you'll see the first item on my my work plan is the Maxwell Water. So I just want to show you something. I'll share my screen. Don't worry, I close all my other browsers, so we're Can you see that?
Not yet.
Yes.
Yep.
All right. So Angela from Waterworks did that. It's it's pretty, it's pretty neat, and I just want to show council. So that's the all the properties in Maxwell that have a water connection. So as you can see on the map there, hopefully you can see the colors clearly, but all the blue ones are the ones that are completed, that are completely done and inspected. The yellow one, they can technically be considered done because they are either on the schedule or they are done and just awaiting to be inspected. So the ones that are left are basically just the red squares that you see. So you will notice that we are making good progress. It's coming along. And just to little heads up, we have not, we have decided not to stop doing the inspections during the lockdown just because the last time when we did that, it was, it was really a mess and very complicated when we started again to try to catch up and everything. So basically what we're doing now is we're doing the inspections, as usual. Of course, masks and I wear gloves and everything. So up to now, we did not have any issues. Some people have asked to wait, and I've I've had some people that I've canceled because they were either in contact with someone with COVID or they had COVID. So the the people are really respectful, and it's working really well up to now. So if we see that it does create some issues, we'll review, but for now, that's what we're, that's the plan, and that's what we're doing. So just wanted to show council that little map here. It's pretty neat what Angela's doing.
That's a great map. It just gives everybody a real look at, what is the the big red one?
This one here? Yeah, this, I guess it's there because it has been surveyed.
And this It's empty land.
Exactly. Yeah. So this is the, one of the lands that we talked about when we removed the holding provision. So that's, that's that big lot there. So it is just one property for now, and I don't even think there's a house on, or there may be one building on it. But yeah, that's that property. Yeah.
Okay.
So that's what it is. All right.
Question before you get rid of that? The the gray ones, are those the ones that have been given a a delay permission?
Yeah, sorry, I don't think you can see it. All that at the bottom here, exemptions or extensions. So some, the roads here, Villeneuve Grant and Cars 3D, they are, they are exempt from some because they're not on boat services. And the other gray squares are the one where people have called in to get extensions. So these are the one that we're going to be, I guess, delayed, but the ones we have to work on right now are all the red squares. So these are the people we're going to try to track down.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
The some of the, oh, I see. Okay. Some of them look gray, but I guess aren't, aren't gray, like it's just a little difficult.
Yeah, the colors may be a little bit sketchy because it's, it looks like some blue and gray. They all look the same, but if, this can probably be emailed to you guys where you can see it clearer for sure. Yeah, but just to in my report here, the numbers are have, the numbers I have there are not exact, but they're, they're quite accurate, I guess. So we have 207 inspections done and about 55 in process, but Angela just sent an email, and it's a little bit less than that. So maybe I think 25 in process and about 210 that are completed. So that's what we have done up to now. And there's 92 that we still have to track down and trying to get a hold of the people. Yeah.
I guess the ones that are zeros are, those must be vacant lots, are they?
Some are vacant, yeah. Some, it may just be a glitch, but yeah, I would say most of them are vacant lands. Yeah, see the ones here next to on on your street there, some of, most of them are vacant, and yeah, most of the zeros are vacant plans. Yeah.
Okay. And the KS grounds, can you, are they, are they hooked up?
KS here, you mean, the Kenyan Cultural Society?
I think 25, isn't that the Maxwell Sports Complex?
Yeah, 35 is the Hall of, is the Sports Hall of Fame, I think. This would be the arena. And then this here has been connected. This is the, I guess, the agricultural, the yeah, the 46 and 46 here. There's two buildings there. They both have water, but we're not 100% sure yet how they're connected. But yeah, they're, they're ready to go. So we just need to get in touch with the, with the right people.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any comments on this, on this? Okay, go ahead, Jacob.
Okay, thank you. So I will share my screen again. I'm just going to move on to my next my next little light in there, the building permit application software. So I have been talking about that for, I guess, the last year. And it's, it's now up and running. So since the beginning of the beginning of 2021, I have started using the new software. So I just want to show council quickly how it works. So this is here, you can see that, the map there?
Yes.
SDG, so that's the SDG Explorer. So that's the GIS from the counties that were that that we're sharing with all the other counties. Basically, this here is what I would use to have the real the real map, like the real drape view of what's going on to measure and to see the zoning. Like you can see the properties like that. And then what I would do is I would move on to the new system that's called CGIS. This one here, tell me when you can see that.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, so this basically is a map of the township with all the properties on it. So it's pretty useful in the fact that if you click on the site here, you can see all the permits that we have issued. You can go per year, like see, I have just issued a few ones. They become green. And what's neat about it, and what I was afraid that what's going to happen is that all the, the old permits would go away. But what they have done is they have done something called Legacy Permits. So if we just zoom on a property here really, really randomly, if you go on it, Michael Madden, right here, so you can see who the owner is and everything. And if you, yeah, and if you look at the legacy, so these are all the properties that had permits issued. So if you just drag over the property, it tells you all the permits that this, that this owner took. So a little FYI, some outstanding permits on that property. I'm just kidding.
I think we close those if, if everything's
Yeah, I just, yeah, just shot myself in the foot. I haven't closed the permits yet, Michael. And then just to quickly demonstrate how how it actually works, so you go here. So it's all done, it's all web-based, so I can access that from anywhere. It's like any other website. So any place where I have access to internet, you have access to these new, to these, to these permits there. So you just create your permit. And what's nice about that is that you have what what we did kind of have with the old system, but here it's all online. So you have all like the permit number, the address, the contact, the person, what type of building it is, construction type. So if you want to add like what, if is it a wood, is it a concrete, is it all that stuff, you have the deck inspection, spool inspection, the fees are all entered in there. So you just enter all your information in there, you save your permit, and then you have access from anywhere. Maybe in the future, like it has a tab here, inspections, where you can actually do the inspection on your cell phone. So you enter all your notes, and you can just email the report right onsite to the, to the owner. So it is quite, quite helpful. Yes, Jeff, did you have a question?
Just wondering, so who, Jacob, who has access to this?
Right now, there's only me. We will shout out, of course, we'll need access because eventually what I would like her to do is as soon as we get an application, she could enter it all right in there. So I wouldn't have to do it after. Right now, we're still using all our, like, I'm a big fan of paper trail, so we still are using our file, our paper files. So that's what she creates, and then she gives it to me, and I create it on the computer here. Also, in the future, Todd will have access to that because there is a module for for bylaw. So all the, all the orders, all the like any complaints that he can get, like that he gets, he could input them in here. So if he had many complaints about vicious dog or whatever, I could see it when I go and do an inspection at the same time. Yeah.
Right.
So Todd would have access to that, too. Yeah.
Okay, that's great.
Jacob?
Yes.
Would any, would any aspect of of this be available to the public?
Not for that one, no, because there's a lot of information that is not really public information. That's like, there's like the size of the building, you can enter the type of construction, where it is, the value of stuff that they did, the fee they paid for their permit, the actual value of the building. A lot of stuff can't be made public on this, and it's not something like even for Todd, it's not made for the public to go and enter themselves a complaint. It's really us that we enter it, and it's, it's more for tracking between ourselves than with the public. So that's not the one like, if someone would see a pothole in the road, he could just go boom, 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 enter it. It's not that same of, that same kind of of software. So no, that one is just for us. Yeah.
And and what about the map that you showed earlier, that that map, that GIS mapping? Is that available to the public?
Yeah, that is, it's, you remember the map that Kesha showed her zoning? That's the exact same map.
Okay.
Exactly mapping system. So that, that is accessible to public, but it doesn't have any information on building permits.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
All right.
And I just add, just for the public's information, the Counties Explorer is very usable. I used it for another property. And there's some great GIS tools that are on there that the public can use if they're looking at their own property or want to look at another property. There's nothing that information, like Jacob said, that that shouldn't be shared, but there's some really, really good GIS tools that otherwise you'd pay thousands of dollars for a software to get that kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a very good, very good thing to have in public, for sure. Yeah. And then it has all like the the measuring tools and everything. So for people who want to see if they can sever off lands and everything, the zoning is all on there, too. So yeah, it is very neat. Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
All right.
Just, just one last quick question. Is that only available through the county's website?
I think so, yeah. If you, I believe so, but we, Kesha and I think Andy created a right, right off of our website. So from our website, you can access that mapping directly. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right.
That it, Jacob? Or you have more?
Well, I'm good for the sharing. I'll just Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, okay. So the rest item, yeah, building permits. So as you can see here, I know last year we were kind of blocked for a few months there where we could not issue some permits, but as you can see in these numbers, last year we've issued 236 permits for a value of permit of $172,000. It's compared to the year before where we had 212 permits for a value of 91,000 permits. So we had, in 2019, we had less permits and about half the value of the permit. So the the building, building department has been really busy, even though the the COVID hit and stuff. So it hasn't changed for North Glengarry and for most smaller townships around. It hasn't changed a lot for, for construction. And I have just under And I have just under in my report there, uh I have all the list, so right now, as you all know, we're in the lockdown. And so what we're doing uh for permits is I'm doing the exact same thing I was doing. In the April or May of last year, so basically you can apply for your permit. I will review it, I will prepare it all, and when the lockdown stops, I will actually issue the permit. So some, we just had a meeting this morning, uh some other townships, what they're doing is they're actually issuing the permit. But they put a note on there saying that you cannot start the construction, because if you read. If you read this correctly, it doesn't say you can't issue the permit, it just says that you cannot start the construction, so. It's kind of weird, it's like giving an eighteen year old boy his driver's license and a car, but telling him he cannot drive, so. It's a little bit, it's a little bit weird the way they're doing things, so I'm I'm just holding off on all the permits right now. Uh I have had zero issues with with people complaining up to now, uh if it would happen, I would of course uh consult with with. With the CEO probably and figure something else, but for now, it hasn't been an issue at all, so that's good. Yeah, uh there's no exemptions also for uh triplexes being built on corner lots, I haven't find anything for that, so. Whatever, we'll we'll see about that later. Uh so yeah, rest of the report, uh office desk, so again, we're working on that, it's a little bit hard with the with the COVID. And trying to find some people. Uh I have a little paragraph here on development charges. Uh as you know, it's part of our uh our, I remember the name, sorry, the. Exactly, yeah, that, um so it it's on there, we're we're at the really early stage of that. We have started to get in touch with some people, but we're, the plan is to uh to work on that during the year, so that's on here. Uh bylaw enforcement, again, this is a little bit of a copy paste from last year where Todd is going around checking our facilities. Checking for gatherings and public and whatnot. Uh we have a lot less complaints and a lot less issues with COVID stuff. This time around, just because I guess people are are used to it, but it's it's going good for for that. We have some issues, of course, but not as much as the last time. Uh then the IHA project, you're pretty much up to date with that, uh the clear cutting bylaws, so so we're working on another. Uh another review, the legal review, the L path appeal for the suitors, we're still waiting to hear from them. It was supposed to be done this week or next week, I guess, but we never know with them. Uh and then the rest, I think it's pretty much uh same uh same old, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your report. Uh are there any questions or comments from members of the committee? Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the um with regards to the IHA project um and the planning process. Maybe this is for Casha, I don't know, but uh I I think the next step is the site plan, is it not?
Yeah, they're working on that now, okay, Keshia just popped in, maybe she can uh she can update us, yeah.
Is there a timing for that, yeah?
Oh yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh yes, uh they have initiated the site plan, we're probably uh hosting the reconsultation uh meeting next week. So that will be the first step. It's anywhere from six to twelve months.
Okay, uh I I um. I I didn't realize that the United Counties of SDNG are the approval authority for site plans. Does that uh if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
No, it's the township does the approval.
Yeah, where did I read that then?
Not for um.
Severances.
Yes.
Oh, it was for planned subdivisions, wasn't it?
Oh, that's it, okay, very good, thank you, never mind my nonsense there.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I had a motion to accept this report, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Okay, uh moving on to planning procedural changes, uh a motion moved by councillor Wentzing, seconded by councillor Madden. That the committee of the whole received staff report BP twenty twenty one zero three and provide staff with direction to proceed with procedural changes. Proceed with procedural changes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so this is a very interesting item, and the goal is to improve the efficiency of the planning department. So as you would have seen in the staff report, uh there has been changes in the planning act in July first, two thousand and sixteen. So what actually happened is the planning act gave uh the permission. For lower tier municipalities to have the option of having a planning committee. So I researched and the remaining townships within SDG, they do not have a planning committee. For standard zoning by law amendments, so the proposal is to effectively uh approve zoning. Um by law amendments uh without a planning committee, it will be a public meeting. So within the staff report, you see that it's optional for lower tier municipalities to appoint a planning committee. Uh so for the proposed changes, uh right now, we have two sets of approvals. Uh firstly, a zoning by law application goes to uh the planning committee, then it goes to council for final adoption. And what also happens is we have a public meeting and a planning meeting, and the reports are actually pretty much exactly the same. It's a duplication, which is not the e- efficient use of time for staff, so. One of the changes that this would bring is basically eliminate this duplication, it will be only one public uh staff report. So with a public meeting and then the public will be allowed to make comments as part of planning act, the council would also be. Uh have time, have an opportunity to make comments, ask questions, and there could be uh modifications made. To the application through the public meeting, and then there will be a consequential report at the council meeting two weeks later. So there will be still two steps, the public meeting with the public comments, council comments, and the following meeting of council, the four reports. Uh so one thing that's important to note is the planning committee could still be engaged to review. Planning studies, new official plans and comprehensive zoning by law, so anything, anytime there is something more. Important, high level, such such as a large study, the planning committee could still be engaged, but for the day to day. Standard zoning by law applications and housekeeping zoning by law amendments, uh it would. New process would be a a public meeting followed by council meeting. So what I will do now is I will share my screen just to show you the example of a public meeting. A presentation, so just share my screen. That's my report, and this is a example of a public meeting presentation agenda from South Stormont. So we have the items here, and then you have the circulated notice required, you have the key map. Part of the report for the public meeting, and then you have a simple but effective report to the public and council for the public meeting. So describing the public meeting process with the first slide for the public, how the notice was given. Explaining the twenty day opportunity for appeal. And the options that council has to pass the per or refuse the zoning amendment application, and then the details of the application itself. So that's just an example, I won't go through this, it's just for illustration purposes, basically, I would adapt the presentation and reporting to something quite similar. Okay, so this is what will be presented to the public and council at the public meeting, uh essentially. Oh, does anyone have questions at this point about how the public meeting would be run, because I'll proceed to explain how the council report would?
Any member, any questions from the members of the committee? Okay, seeing none, go ahead.
Okay, so that's the example of the public meeting uh presentation staff reports. And all right, so stop sharing here, and now I'd like to show you. The example of a council meeting report, so and just open it here. For the council meeting, basically, it will be a full staff report, uh including any changes that were discussed during the public meeting and the bylaw document. And the presentation would be less detailed, ba- basically will be a brief recap of the zoning by law amendment application. Uh so I'm just trying to find it here. Okay, there you go, going to share the screen again. Okay, so this is an example for the council meeting for zoning amendment at South Stormont. So again, notice, all the required documentation. And uh the staff report, basically sho- showing the same information. As then the public meeting and any any modifications that were made from the public meeting, including the. Uh council meeting comments and anything that was pertinent from the public meeting comments. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions from the members of the committee? Seeing none? Okay. Yeah, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Yeah, I just wanna compliment you, Keshia, on this change, I think it's an excellent one. It'll um it'll really streamline our our um that that process, the planning process, and and. Probably avoid a whole lot of confusion, so thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions or comments? Okay, I have a motion uh that asked staff to proceed with the procedural changes, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. All right. Okay, moving on to Hobby Farms zoning by law amendment. I have a motion moved by councillor Noble, seconded by councillor Manley, that the council of the township. They receive staff report BP twenty twenty one zero two and provide staff with direction to proceed with the proposed housekeeping zoning by law amendment. Keshia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so this item was presented at the committee of the hall in November twenty twenty. So this is a recap and with some adjustments that were made based on the committee comments. So as you all know, there is a very large public interest for hobby farms on lots that might be large enough. So currently, uh hobby farms are only permitted on rural lots, which are seven point four acres or three hectares in size. And for agricultural lots, it has to be an area of seventy four acres, thirty hectares, very large for any kind of animals to be permitted. Within the zoning by law, uh so the proposed changes would uh decrease this area drastically. For agricultural lots and also for rural lots a little bit. So just a a brief recap of the policies, so there's no restrictions. And the SDG County's official plan to this proposal and OMAFRA staff staff are supportive of this uh change within the zoning by law. Especially for existing undersized agricultural lots, so that as you will see in the staff report and the discussion. The purpose of the housekeeping zoning by law amendment is to permit hobby farms on agricultural and rural lots. Which are five acres or two hectares or larger, so this would permit a maximum of five nutrient units. Uh as is defined by the NDS formula, so just to give an example, one nutrient unit is, for example, one cow. And one nutrient unit could also be twenty chickens, and depending on the size of the horse, it could be. Two horses per nutrient unit or or one horse per nutrient unit, it really depends, just to give you some examples of the number of animals that could. Fit within those five nutrient units, so anytime there is a six nutrient units or more. Uh the hobby farm will be subject to MBS calculations and also the OMAFRA ministry approvals. So there will be a um nutrient management strategy strategy required with along with the minor birds. So uh more about the proposed warding for the housekeeping zoning amendment. So basically, we would add a definition of what is a hobby farm that we don't have a definition currently, so it would be a small scale. Farm operated for personal enjoyment or supplemental income rather than primary income. And we are proposing to add general provisions uh defining what a hobby farm is and the regulations that it should follow. So again, a maximum of five nutrient units with a minimum area of five acres. And a minimum lot frontage of seventy five acres, uh the animals are to be housed within a structure that is designed appropriately. And the building needs to follow the setbacks which are existing within the general ad designation. And the enclosures and housing have to be located a minimal fifteen meters from any well or septic system. I know that was part of the comments uh last year in November, and then just some uh procedural amendments, so. Adding the hobby farm as a primitive use within the ag zone and amending the rural zone by deleting the existing. Warding for the hobby farm and replacing it with the general provisions and that hobby farm definition that I gave you. Is there any questions?
Councillor Massey.
Yeah, there's a, again, like, we're uh limit twenty birds per hectare. Could we just simplify that and put that through acres, just to, because we're going from acres to hectare again? Also, I know in the Ontario, the law for the broiler, the law it permitted for broilers is three hundred birds per customer per address. A year, and I I think that limit of twenty birds per hectare is way too small, like somebody wants buys a five acre farm or. Three acres, six, seven acre farm, you can raise, they take about a two two square feet of a building. So if you have a hundred birds, uh it's a two hundred square foot enclosure, basically. And I think that it's just because there is people that are gonna complain about that, because they can't buy. Ontario law provides that you can buy up to three hundred meat birds and hundred laying chickens, but if they can't. Uh because we're limited them, I think there could be a problem, can you look into that if we not cannot increase that or?
And so first of all, for the units, it's always listed, the metric system like hectares, uh but when I do my staff report, there's always both units for the public. So that's clear, in general, the number of chickens, so the example I gave, uh one nutrient unit being twenty chickens, that's just an example. I think it goes up to forty or so, so that number might be closer to uh two hundred or so.
So just that we're not too, sorry, just we're not too uh rigid or, I know this is a great idea to to finally offer. Hobby farms in our region, because it was a very complicated before, uh just that limit on birds and limits on rabbits and, you know, we. We shouldn't be really getting to that, just basically, just basically. Make sure that we don't go over the manual management, there's a, we follow the guidelines, I don't think if you.
Yeah, Jacques, the 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 amount of birds may be a little bit higher than than what Keshia mentioned. It really depends on the kind and the size of birds you have, so the the limit would really be imposed like for for this. And again, it's not like the the limit for the broilers association or whatnot, maybe a different thing, but the limit for for this here. To be able to be considered as a hobby farm and to have your building as close as that to the property line, we're limiting it to five nutrient units. Because if you go more than that, you have to do a minimal distance separation, which is the same thing as the suitors did for their for their manure pit. So you have to calculate like with your neighbors, how far you are from everything, so if you go over, it it open, it pretty much opens a can of worms. Because you have to be far from from neighbors, from property lines, so that's why we're just limiting it to five for for the zoning aspect of it. So if you want to, if you have a bi- a bigger lot and you want to have a a an intensive livestock facility. This here would not apply at all, yeah, just just to to clarify the hobby farm thing, yeah.
Hey, Michael Madden.
I'll add some more information here, just so that everybody knows what we're talking about. Uh on the OMAFRA website, I'm looking at it right now, and as far as chickens go, the minimum number for one nutrient unit is a hundred. And that is for chicken broiler breeder layers. Uh the maximum goes up to five hundred, but that's only for day old pullets. Uh so basically, you're looking at a range of between one hundred to, I'm gonna say, three hundred uh. So Jacques, to to address your point, I mean, as far as three hundred birds, that's not an issue. Uh my concern would be people maybe taking advantage of this and trying to do five hundred or seven hundred chickens. On a on a five acre property, that's gonna be a problem for us.
Yeah, please don't buy that many birds.
Well, and this is it, so. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, not to interrupt, I I get you, just. Yeah, sorry, not to interrupt. I get you. Just that if we limit the units of manure management to the bylaw, like a five, one manure management per hectare or per acre, I think not getting to the details of 20 chickens or three rabbits and four pigs, you know, you'll muddle the water for nothing, I think.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just bringing this up so that it's basically, it's still one cow per nutrient management. But one nutrient management can be 300 birds, right? Or 100 birds. So as far as limiting people to 20 chickens, that's not our issue. Our issue may be more than we expect. That's all I want everybody to understand here.
Yeah, just to to, just to explain to council, the hobby farm issues that we have are really not with rabbits and chickens and small livestock like that. The ones we have issues with is like, I would say 90% of the time, it's with horses. Because one horse usually counts as one or two nutrient units. And what you, what's happening is that the person is allowed to have three. Well, if you go in front of the house the year after, they may have 12 horses. So that's the issue we have. But with large livestock like that, it's really easy to say. And it's really, sorry, it's really easy to see. And it's also really easy to tell the guy, listen, you're only allowed to have three horses. It's that simple. So with small livestock, we don't have so many issues, but it's really with larger stuff like cows and horses mostly. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, and thank you, Kasia. I'm happy to see this again. I'm just I'm just wondering about how this is gonna work with, because this conversation, if I remember correctly, kind of came out of the issue with agricultural severances and the fact that the lots that are being retained are, the residential lots are kept to a minimum size because of the provincial policy statement that requires that, right? Is that, that's correct? And so, you know, we were saying, well, if we can get these lots, if the owner of the property, you know, is in favor, if we can get these lots slightly bigger, then maybe they can be used and sold as hobby farms. I think that's kind of where this discussion came from. So my concern in this is the five-acre limit on it because I'm just concerned that maybe it's too big an acreage because often our agricultural severances, the retained lots end up being smaller than that. And is that not true?
Yes, that's true. So as you all know, the surplus dwelling lots are usually limited to three acres. And what's proposed is five acres. There's a difference of two acres. So anytime, the owner could always apply for a minor variance. It is very hard to justify having more than three acres for a surplus dwelling lot, as you know. There needs to be some major factors for the counties to permit that. But if council is in agreement, perhaps forward is five acres.
Yeah, again, I'm not deciding, but I strongly recommend against lowering that five acres because like, five acres, yes, it's big, but it's not so big. If, let's say, a two-acre lot, it can have only, whatever, it can have a lot less frontage. And if you have a neighbor that has five cows or five horses, you're pretty glad he has five acres because you don't want that right next to your property. So again, that's where this five acres come from because you have to have quite enough of a large lot to have a hobby farm. Yeah.
I think we can come back, that people can still come and do a minor variance. Because you'll see some lands will be out in the middle of nowhere with no neighbors and they're 3.1 acres. It's an easy, it's an easy minor variance, you know. We've had these come before and we, I don't think we've ever turned them down. The only time you might turn it down is if there are neighbors right beside each side. So I think that, you know, with the smaller lot, I think it's a, you know, just as a real estate agent, I've done this a couple of times in South Glengarry. And the process goes fairly smooth for it. I mean, and theirs are still at the higher level. So, but I think it's a smooth process and it's, you know, as you said, at three acres, it could be small if you're throwing some cows and stuff on it. But again, I agree with the deputy mayor that most of the severances are less than five. I think, Deputy Mayor, you wanted to say something else?
It's just that, okay, if a, if a minor, you said, sorry, a minor variance? Yeah, so if that, I mean, that sounds like a reasonable solution. For sure. I just didn't, I wasn't aware that that was something that we could promote.
That's something that we decide here locally.
Right. So, okay, that's a good solution. Thank you.
Council Manley?
Yeah, I like that. I like that solution as well or whatever, that we can make that decision and base it and and base it on sort of what's surrounding the property and that kind of thing. I think that that's a smart, smart decision. So I'm good with this.
Council Madden.
And that I just wanted to agree. And the benefit, I think, to us of not going lower than five and requiring minor variance is that we can stipulate a number of nutrient management units if it is small than five. We could stipulate even a certain number of animals, depending on what's around or the potential impacts to neighbors. So everybody can still get ideally or close to what they want. And we're doing our best to mitigate any impact to neighboring properties.
Absolutely. Yep, thank you. Okay, everyone's good with that? Okay, I'll read the motion again. The Council of Township in North Glengarry receives staff report BP 2021 and provides staff with direction to proceed with the proposed housekeeping zoning bylaw amendment. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Just a question to Kasia, when is this coming back to council? It does come back to council?
Yes, so we'll go back to the planning committee. We do need to circulate it for three weeks. So that will be on the March 3.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the Public Works Department, departmental work plan update, January 2021. I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall receives staff report PW 2020 02, departmental work plan update, January 2021, from the Public Works Department.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just waiting for the video to come on. Is it on?
You've never looked better. Oh, there you are.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we'll start with COVID-19. We've told all our staff to be vigilant, use separate vehicles, disinfect the vehicles or work spots, all their work areas. They lift the can. Zoe has also developed an app for all the the workers before they show up to work. It's like a 12-question survey where they just punch in yes or no answers and submit it. And we get to see it that morning and we can watch what, if there's any symptoms, if anybody has any symptoms, be in contact with anybody. So it just protects us a bit. Winter maintenance, road crews have been busy. The last storm on the weekend, they worked all weekend. And they were back out Monday night through the night clearing and did all the sidewalks and all the banks. We had to contract out all the trucking on this one. The first one we did, we used all our in-house trucking, but for this one, it was a bigger one. So we outsourced it. They have triaxle trucks. So it's bigger trucks that goes a lot quicker and makes them more efficient. The fleet, we did have a few minor breakdowns. The lower, we had a problem with the rad. The chameleon had some issues in a couple of trucks, but they've all since been repaired. We received our new truck. And since Jacob had pictures, I ran out and got some pictures of it too, to undo them. It was a competition. So this truck is based out of greenfield. It's got the ice scraper on it. It reduces the salt consumption too. Okay. Brushing. Let me just stop this.
Did we get?
I didn't see anything.
We saw a picture.
Okay, just a second here. So we did brushing out on Seven Tail Road.
Jacob would know how to do this, Dean.
Do you see that?
No, seeing nothing.
Click your share screen. Want to just tell us it looks good or?
Show a picture.
There we go.
A better?
Yes.
Didn't text what I'm doing there. So that's the ice scraper. Yeah, it's based on a greenfield server. You want to go and have a look at it? Go right ahead.
Oh, it looks great.
It's pretty.
All shiny.
Excellent.
Okay, so I'm back here now. Yeah, so we did have our excavator and razor out on Seven Tail Road doing some brushing. So that's the outcome of it. If you can see that yet.
Nothing yet.
Sorry. And voila, better?
No.
Thank you. Okay, well, that's the excavator with the and that's what it does. It does look like an eyesore for a bit till the spring. But we did have some complaints from buses and tractors going through. And it's the next slide. You can see where it overhangs into the road. And it was scratching out the buses and tractors and some other vehicles. So we had to do something about it.
Dean, just a question.
Yes.
Is there any way to notify residents along those rural roads in advance of that kind of work so that they're not surprised by it? And as a result, understand why it's being done and then, you know, less chances of them complaining?
Yeah, we could do that. All these complaints, they stem from neighbors calling in, asking for it. So some of these residents are on these roads, but we could do a leaf droplet or mailbox drop-off before to let them know. They could probably avoid some of these calls because we, I did meet up with one neighbor that wasn't very happy, a friend of Brenda's. They met up with Brenda afterwards or got a call Brenda, I think. So, yeah, in the future, we don't really have time right now to be doing any. So the guys are back on the snowplows, so. Next, the water and sewer, the Alexander Water Treatment. We had an inspection, MOE came in and did the inspection in September. And the ninth year running that we have a 100% score. It's still in the draft report. We haven't got the full report yet. So that's always good news. Kudos to my staff for, a lot of these inspections are are relevant about the the procedures and make sure you follow the procedures and you're taking the right steps. If there is a problem, we did have some problems. And as long as we follow the right steps, that's what they're looking at. Make sure that everything is well documented. Documentation's a big one. So make sure everything's documented. So once we get the final report, Angela will probably present it to you guys. The Alexander distribution, we have, since the last report, had five water breaks. Three of these, we contracted out. We got it sourced to another contractor to do it to so our guys aren't in close contact with each other. It is a bit more costly, but a bit safer for keep our staff safe. And Glen Robertson Distribution, before Christmas, we did staff notice that there was a higher water consumption. So we reached out with one of the local residents. She had the business there. So she posted on Facebook, hoping to to pass the word around, to check the basements, look in the crawl spaces. Didn't get anything back from that. So we did a door-to-door, dropped off some leaflets, and then we got a call from a plumber asking us to go out because they found a water meter that had froze and busted. So we sent our staff out to repair it and closed it back to normal. The landfill, Glengarry landfill, we had a request from MOE to purchase some land, it was two years ago, to put some marching wells on there. So right before Christmas. See that?
Yeah.
We had to get in there, we had to wait till it froze because it's pretty swampy in there. So we had to create a, open up a 300-meter trail to get to the back end of the property that we own now. And they put three sets of wells, a shallow and a deep well in there. So this was done just before Christmas. And last thing I have is infiltration and inflow on our sewer system. It's been a problem since, for years and years, we've been putting a lot of money into reducing the amount of extra flow that's coming in to our system. We've been doing a lot of video, a lot of relining, routing, connection repairs, watertight manhole covers, done about everything. We did the roof drain. We had did a survey back in 2015. We went around and looked at all the roof drains to see where they were going. I think it's gonna be time now that we're gonna have to hit all these illegal sump pump connections. I know it's not a popular item, but it has to be done to reduce the flows. We do have a bylaw that helps us out on this, but we're gonna have to do something. I know there is some municipalities that have some incentives to help out homeowners to help them out. In 2017, we did have a consultant give us a proposal to help us out with some flow monitoring. But it just never, never got anywhere. So I contacted them last week and bring it back to the table. So we'll be presenting a a report and what's the best way to deal with this, whether some places, there is, there is no place to put the stormwater, all these sump pump connections. If they just pump it out, some of them will go on the neighbors. Some of them end up on the road, which makes safety hazard. So we may have to look into installing a new storm systems in some of these older areas where there's no storms. So it's big enough undertaken. So we'll be coming back with a report on that. And that's all I have. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions, Council Madden.
Just a quick question, Dean, and I don't expect an answer. I'm wondering if there's an estimate or a ballpark of money that's been spent on the attempt to reduce over the last, I don't know, call it 10 years. And the only reason I'm asking, sorry, about some, about trying to reduce storm flow.
Oh, yes.
And I'm thinking about this just in relation to lagoons and what we're working on and trying to get some improvements done and some capacity built. If we, if we have another, for lack of a better term, I'm gonna call it a storyline that we can present to funding partners or potential funding partners to show what we spent and what kind of money we're putting into this that, you know, could be directed elsewhere.
Yeah, we have put a lot of money to it. I think back in 2014, we did get some funds. I think it was funded 75%. We put it towards a big, big relining and CCTV program. We did a lot, a lot of work in the early years in 15, 16. And every year, we put some money aside, I think it's 50,000 or 60,000 for CCTV. And from those reports, the following year, we put some money into relining and grouting to reduce. We tried to do these, this camera work in the wet times. So we can see that some of these were these leaking. But we do have a pretty good grasp on how much we've actually spent over the years.
You think you could put together some numbers for us just so that we have some more numbers to throw around at people?
Yeah, definitely.
Please.
Good point. Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Noble.
Hi, Dean. Just a question. When you're talking about the snow, now that we've had a real big dump, have you had any hits on getting new drivers for the pool or?
Yes, it's very, we've had, I think, six applicants. Some of them are really good candidates. So the foremen are looking at all of them. And we'll make a short list and we'll reach out to them, see if they're interested in helping us out. Sooner than later.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I will change the second to Councilor Madden. I just got a text from Councilor Massey and his internet is down. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried.
He doesn't have real internet.
It's that fake one. We're moving on to fire department. I have a motion moved by, not by Councilor Massey, by by Councilor Wint. by Counselor Wincinck. And seconded by Counselor Noble, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report FD twenty twenty one zero one, departmental work plan update, January twenty twenty one, from the Fire Department. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a real quick report on a few items that we have going on. Um, in terms of recruitment, so the selection process is completed. And six newer recruits have been selected, so they're currently going through and provide all the prerequisites, which include MTO abstract, criminal record check and medical. Uh, once all that clearance is done, then they're going to be provided a conditional offer of employment where it will be, of course, loaded onto a coup course, which will last over the the next year. And once, once that that course is completed, then they'll be provided a full offer of employment at that point with the the fire service. So, uh, at this time, however, with the COVID restrictions in place, it's, it has slowed our recruitment process actually on board with us and to start the recruit program. So once the COVID restrictions are lifted, then we could assess that it can be done safely, then we'll be moving forward further for improvement. Um, in terms of the aerial truck, again, due to restrictions, this has slowed our training for the aerial um, that we have in place. However, we've, it's still continued, we've continued with the undergoing of the structural integrity of the, the aerial device, which it did pass with, with no issues and met all the NFP standards. So, uh, once the COVID restrictions are lifted, we have training that's set to be started. So we're going to be moving to online format at this point, so all the theory portion could be completed virtually. And what's, uh, we could safely have the members come in for training and we're going to have be brought into place at that time. So, uh, further, this, uh, we haven't added this apparatus to our mutual aid inventory, so at this point, um, we don't anticipate adding this, the apparatus to the mutual aid until we could have further discussions down the road. Uh, in terms of some progress on the aid agreements currently in place and the reviews, certain bylaws. So I do anticipate reviewing the automatic aid agreements that we currently have in place with North Stormont and Shawland Plain Township, so hopefully we could have this done, uh, within the first or second quarter. And as both of those agreements are currently up, however, they're, they're still in place as as we can continue the progress throughout until we, either parties want to, to make any amendments to it. Uh, as well as the establishing, regulating the fire department, uh, it's been reviewed. Uh, and now, uh, we're going to be fully updating and a report becoming to council, uh, within the first quarter as well. In terms of COVID updates, uh, as you can tell, a lot of, we have been affected quite significantly in terms of how we can undergo our training. So, uh, however, currently, um, all the members have been provided a, a policy that's in place that outlines all the requirements. So currently the doors are closed, accepting for, uh, attending for incidents. This is going to mitigate any, uh, potential potential opportunities where we can, we have large gatherings. So we want to ensure that we don't, we don't want to show that we're gathering a large number. So this is why it's going to be, it's solely limited to incidents only. So, uh, all the members are following and we have a strong decontamination practices in place to ensure that we don't have any spread of COVID. I gotta say, in terms of, um, we've had a couple of incidents where we had to action certain aspects. And I have to say, um, we have, due to good collaboration between bylaw and administration with the CIA and so forth, we do have very good practices in place to ensure that, uh, whenever we do have, uh, some COVID incidents, uh, it was rectified and we can ensure that operationally that we were fully effective. That's great for us. In terms of new training platform, due to the ongoing pandemic, we've kind of addressed, um, the, the way that we can move forward in terms of our training programs, uh, which we've looked at and we've acquired in a platform target solutions. This is going to give the ability to have access of online learning for all our members, which includes NFP standards. Uh, and it's going to move a lot of the theory portion of the training. So we're going to be able to have a lot more aspects of hands-on training down the road. So this is a great for us and all the firefighters where, um, it'll also allow us to track the, the progression of their training and monitor, should we ever have any audits, um, from the, from Fire Marshal's office. As well, in addition, I know it's not on the, on the agenda. However, uh, the Intero Fire College has recently announced the so they are going to be closing on a permanent basis. Um, they are moving to a blended approach, uh, online learning, uh, as well as leaning towards regional training centers. So, uh, fortunately, Northern Air, we've positioned ourselves very well in moving forward uh, in the past couple of years of building a training center, which is fully operational, as well as we're, uh, we're moving forward on developing learning contracts with the Intero Fire College, which is a blended aspect where we can deliver the NFPA course in-house, which again is a cost savings aspect for us while, uh, still being able to meet all the, the standards. So I don't foresee any, uh, it's very unfortunate that they're closing. However, um, they're still going to be, uh, participating and mandating all the, the courses moving forward. And, uh, any courses that, we do have access to the regional train centers, uh, which in the area currently, there's one in Prescott Russell. However, at this time, I'm foreseeing a lot of blended courses, uh, online courses that we could still take through to college and, uh, developing some learning contracts in-house. So we, and we do have the instructors and the capability of delivering on that front, so. Uh, but that pretty much concludes all my report, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, great. Councilman.
Just a couple, couple of quick things. Um, Matt, just wondering, um, you said six new recruits. Um, how does that compare to previous years with regards to recruits?
So we did have a large number, uh, at this time, um, just it was based on, we recruit for the whole township as a whole, so however, there's only certain vacancies in each station. So, um, we did get a larger pool in certain stations that didn't require as many members. So it is, uh, we still have a very good intake of, uh, of applicants and that's a very good thing to see. What we've done is we, um, we selected six, however, um, another, uh, I believe six have been put into a pool. So we can still reach out to that pool, uh, even through mid-year. And then we could just access them back and bring them in and start up another recruit program mid-year or whenever we deem appropriate. So, um, because we don't want to actually do, uh, selection processes every year. Uh, so we anticipate even having that pool open for the next year or next year, next two years, so.
That's great. That's great. And just to follow up, I just wanted to say, um, Chief, congratulations on the the visit by Santa to all the schools before Christmas. Fantastic, absolutely fantastic. It, it in, in these times or whatever, and for those school kids, um, it, it meant the world. So congratulations to our department for doing that. That was fantastic.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. That was great.
Council Wincinck.
Yes, hi. Great job, homicide department for that. Just going back to what you were saying about vacancies. Are you finding that it's more difficult to find recruits for the rural areas or could you just expand on your comments, please?
Yeah, sure. In terms of where stations are located, it is, you know, as most Ontario volunteer departments are experiencing is we have working communities and we have communities that are more work, living communities. And in some aspects such as Apple Hill where the station and in Maxwell, it is difficult sometimes to, to have that, that balance where you have the availability of, of members, uh, throughout the day and so forth. So are we seeing a decline in applicants? Um, I want to say we have a decline in applicants. We're not at any level that's, uh, we still have a very strong, uh, number of firefighters within. We do have some, some capabilities to, to increase the amount of firefighters. But when we do need to, uh, reach out, uh, we do. Sometimes we do find some aspects of lower in those communities, but again, it does play on, um, the availability of, you know, having it being a working community or just a living community. So, um, and that's something that we're going to be looking at down the road is how we can look at, um, providing orientations where people could come out. And unfortunately, this year, through the, the hiring process, that's what we were struggled with is with the COVID restrictions. We typically have open houses where they come in and people have access to fire departments and they can speak to the firefighters. We weren't able to do that this year. We're fortunate enough to still have about sixteen applicants, which is, which is a high number for for, you know, the pool is still there and we still have access to them and, and that does change. Hope, I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Our body.
Just, uh, one quick point, uh, Chief, uh, incident reports that you send are very appreciated. I don't know how long they've been going on for. Uh, since I was elected to this position back in the fall, we've, I guess, we're fortunate to have only had a few. Uh, but the speed that you do them with and the, the detail that you provide is very appreciated because it always eventually comes out in a discussion in the community. And I have the information when, uh, when I'm asked a question, so, um, it's appreciated. And I, for me, it's a, it's a very handy thing and a very good thing to have that information when we get it. So, perfect job. Thank you.
Excellent, thanks.
Awesome. Okay, no further questions? Seeing none, thank you, Chief, for your report.
Thank you.
Favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Uh, our next committee, the whole meeting is Wednesday, February seventeenth at three P M. Not at the Sandfield Center. Yeah, I'm sure that will still be online. And motion to adjourn, I have a motion moved by Councilor Manley, seconded by Councilor Manning, there being no further business to discuss. The meeting was adjourned at four twenty-three P M. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Well, thank you, everyone, for, uh, joining us online today to watch the meeting. And thank you very much, uh, to members of staff and, uh, the committee members for attending today. Have a great day and have a great weekend. Thank you.
Thanks. To clarify, we're definitely doing the budget meeting next Wednesday and it's definitely on Zoom.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thursday, next Thursday.
Thursday. Thursday.
Yep, there'll be, it doesn't look like, uh, restrictions will be loosening anytime soon. So we had to make a decision at some point and get it on the table, so we'll start.
We are still locked down until the eleventh?
Yes, we'll start, uh, we will start with this and see how it goes. And if we have to wait and, uh, to do it in person, then we will do that, but let's see if we can try and get it done online.
Good.
Thanks.
Question before we go. Did anybody else, did you guys get the Canadian Municipal Barometer Annual Survey email? Is this something that is legit?
It was too long. I didn't bother.
Oh, I've, uh, we, what we've always done is council has always let the low man on the totem pole fill it in. Very much appreciate you doing it.
Congratulations, Mr. Madden.
A big day for you. Congratulations. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
All right.